Mr. Gus?
Good evening.
You're on for a twenty minute pre-presentation.
Okay, and I would bet it doesn't even take that long because I think the Q and A is probably more important as many of you in the room have already seen our proposal and probably have the questions ready to go, but just let me give you a quick overview of our experience, our background, our interest in wanting to be your trusted advisor and counselor on this process. I started tonight guys consulting now called DMO Pros back in 1995 after exceeding my MBA, but also after a ten year career actually managing destination marketing organizations in the Midwest. So for the past 21 years, we have advised just a shade under 200 different destinations across North America. We don't say that to brag, but we say it instead to just let you know that we've seen virtually every style type structure that there is both in funding and in governance. And we hope to be able to bring that knowledge to you. There's probably not very many structures that we haven't seen in play somewhere in this country or in Canada. So the consulting thing has gone on for the past 21 years. Prior to that, I was five years as the CEO of the Greater Madison, Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau, four or five years prior to that, a small suburban bureau just outside of Chicago called the Cankey Key, Illinois Convention and Visitors Association. So I have done time on both sides of the DMO aisle back in the days when they were called Convention and Visitor bureaus, and those are interchangeable terms today in 2016, although people are beginning to move, as you have, to understanding the Convention and Visitors Bureau is oftentimes very misunderstood by Joe Public. Destination marketing organization gets a little closer to understandable when we're trying to explain what it is we do. I enjoyed your RFQ and thank you again for including us because you tell us all your experiences starting at DMOs. Frankly, not a lot of DMOs start up anymore. Most of that happened in the seventies, eighties, and nineties. We did however have the opportunity to do a startup in Aurora, Colorado, which is a suburb of Denver. Actually Aurora is the city that sits between the airport and the city of Denver. We had that opportunity to work absolutely fresh. There had no destination marketing done there at all. Mayor was very clear of what he wanted, and what he wanted at that point in time was a better brand position for the more, obviously more visitors would come to town, but honestly, he was seeing something that the rest of us are now seeing very clearly, and that is that destination marketing is more than just heads and beds, a lot more than just heads and beds. It really gets to the core of marketing the community for economic development, long-term sustainability, and residential growth. So he saw that ten years ago, and that's why he wanted his DMO in place, and it has done very well since then. But having said that, we've only started one up. We have a system, we transition several. Most recently, Grandberry, Texas. It had been a city department, but after extensive conversations with the community, business leaders, hospitality leader, government, it became very clear that the community had lost faith in the city office, and so we recommended moving to an independent. They are just about the close of their first year, and if you talk to people in Grandberry, they are elated with the difference that the independent structure provided them. Now, on the same token, we're with Osceola County, Florida, that's better known as Kissimmee. We moved them from county to independent, but we moved Martin County, Florida from independent to a government office because it had a lot more sense. The independent was not being responsive to the community at large, and the county really felt a fiduciary responsibility to take that back in, at least for a short term. It's going to be a county department. It may become independent again one day. Hard to say, but we've actually advised them both ways. We helped Chani, Oklahoma, go from a chamber division DMO to an independent. And then Tulsa, Oklahoma, asked us the same question, shouldn't our chamber DMO break away and become independent? And we came back with the answer, no, actually for Tulsa, it works. And that's the thing that we bring to the table is don't come with a preconceived notion. You know, ask me, are there any good chamber DMO combos? Yeah, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Nashville, Carol... Are there city department DMOs that rock? Texas, one of the best in the country. Are there county departments that rock? Fort Lauderdale, one of the best in the country. And of course, there's a lot of independents. Honestly, probably about 60% of all DMOs are independent. About 17% are divisions of chambers of commerce or provisions of economic development, and the rest are probably weird mix of quasi-public authorities and government, either city or county. So to our process, when we enter into these types of situations where it's how do we do this better, our structure, whatever that is, this is really for us a process. Absolutely from the beginning, we understand all governments. We understand Texas hotel occupancy tax and the restrictions that you have. Got that. We also know how DMOs are evolving into being more about heads and not so much heads and beds, but what we don't know is we don't know your culture, we don't know your city, we don't need, but we don't know where the pain points are of the previous structure that you've been using with the BMC. We don't know why the chamber essentially walked away from the visitor center. We don't know what the Hyatt plans to do pre and post, what it is this DMO becomes. We don't know what your EDC is doing, other than we do know that by key targets, and if that's the case, then targeting those industries for meetings and conventions best seem to make marriage. And we know what mention needs, kind of sales they need to level, is they have the sales taken care of, they have the services taken care of. So we come with a lot of questions, and that's really what forms our process, is we have the factual knowledge of how this is done and the different tools we have at our disposal. We really have to know what's most important for you as a community. We have to hear the voice of residents, if you will, and you know better than anyone else who we need to talk to and where the bodies are buried, and what some of the questions are we to ask so that we can give you our best advice moving forward. I think the fascinating thing really drew us to your opportunity is so oftentimes when somebody is starting up a new DMO or transitioning a DMO, there is not a revenue stream of size. And so at first, at two years, it's really, really tough because so much of the startup comes out of marketing, sales, and services money. And the fact that you've got a nice fund balance and honestly, a succession, and it's the hotel tax, puts you in a position that you can't get the ground running, unlike a lot of your peer organizations around the country that when they go into this, maybe not everybody's all in and there's not quite enough money to be able to pull it off. So with that, like I said, we would love to be your trusted partner advisor in this process. We find these to be really exciting times. The destination market is evolving interesting way, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have for us.
Thank you very much. And we'll start with council members.
I'm Deborah Jones. My question to you is, how do you plan to gather all that information? Are you actually going to come plug yourself into the community, and if so, for how long? Just elaborate on that for us a bit.
Right. That's really a conversation that we'll have is, you know, how deep does the information need to be? How many people do we touch personally? How many of them have to be one-on-one? How many of them have to be done in focus groups? How many can we do with an online survey network meeting them? In most of these cases, we would expect to be on the ground in the information gathering phase for probably three to up to five days, and filling our days with, you know, eight to 10 one-to-one interviews, four focus groups, mix and match. But it's really for us about, we would expect to do an online survey for all residents to be able to participate, and then with the guidance from the city, with some help from possibly the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, and other agencies, tell us, okay, let's get a list of 20, 40, 80, whatever that number is, people that we need to talk to face-to-face so we understand nuance. We take all that intel back and match it with, again, our knowledge of the different formats and structures and funding mechanisms around the country and in Texas, and then look at research. I think in the RFQ, it mentioned PKF studies. Actually, we would defer practically more to the Star Report because we think it's a more accurate predictor and record of hotel occupancy. But we will certainly look at PKF, and we would look at historical room tax collections, economic impact data that probably is available from the State Office of Tourism to see growth or in some cases, loss against some of your competitive set. So with a lot of paper intel or online intel and then the personal touch, that's how we build it all together into making our final recommendation that we think that, you know, your structure should be X, fill in the blank.
Thank you. Kay?
Okay. Could you give us a couple of examples of what your research and data gathering has provided or proven in your work with other clients, and any instances where you were surprised by the data results?
Yeah, actually, I can, I'll give you an example. We were doing some work in Reading, Pennsylvania, and the people of Reading have this, I don't know, this, they just don't think they can catch a break, and they just have this terrible image of themselves. And the general feeling in Reading is don't go downtown at night because it's dangerous. And yet, when we did some consumer research with travelers from a 250 mile radius, they ranked at the safest community in southeastern Pennsylvania. Out of 20 possible things they could rank, it was the fourth most appealing thing of Reading. Got that from consumer research. On something that's probably a lot closer to your situation, you know, that we'll go into a community, we were working with Oshkosh, Wisconsin on a brand process, and we had eight focus groups with community leaders from all walks of life. We had an arts group, we had an environmental group, we had business hospitality. And we asked them, what is the one thing that separates Oshkosh from everybody else? Every single group said water. And yet, I defy you to find water in that community. Only if you're a resident can find water. So as a brand positioning stake to attract visitors and industry, there's virtually is no water. I mean, you drive over a bridge over a river, and that's about it. And yeah, residents think one way, but the research shows something completely different. So we've discovered in some cases, some destinations, that there's three or four factions that everybody thought weren't on the same page, and after sitting down with them independently and, you know, individually, we find out that honestly, there's a great deal of support of moving forward. We were just in Springfield, Missouri, a couple of weeks ago, and they have been on again and off again, on again and off, trying to build a convention center. When we polled the community, convention center scored as number one vision for the business community in like 60% of the online surveys that came back, and the board of directors had no idea that they had that much support sitting behind them. And now they're going to start getting a lot more serious about trying to build that second phase with convention center.
Thanks. Bill, you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. But I'd like to ask, just, I'd like to get to nuts and bolts of things. Why should the city of Bastrop hire you over any other, anyone else in this project?
Well, since I don't know who's sitting outside of this room, there are a number of consultants really in our space that do very, very good work. I can only imagine who's out there, and if is, you'd be well served if you were one of us. However, why me? I think probably deeper experience in this type of work. We probably have done more organizational shift startup than anybody else in our space. So I just think it's the knowledge we have and the fact that we hold the interaction with community in the highest of esteem. I mean, we really don't like the projects where the budget is really, really tight and all we can do is online. I mean, it's better than nothing, but there is so much nuanced conversations that we get from community leaders that we really, like I said, we hate to take the assignments where there isn't that personal interaction, and we really thrive on it. We think that our recommendations are better because of it.
Thanks. Deborah, again?
What kind of timeline do you typically have between, you know, getting on the ground and getting all those questions answered that you have, and then having something to present, a solution?
Yeah, usually we're somewhere in that two to two and a half month timeframe for the initial work and then our draft recommendations being presented and made available. I think more important is going to be that second phase, that once we've made the recommendations, that I know there is a, there's an interest in speed to get DMO or whatever it looks like up and running. Your RFQ suggested that that might be by the end of March, and we think that that's probably a little aggressive, depending on what kind of format. I mean, everything depends on format, but let's just say that you did go for a 501(c)(6) independent nonprofit, which is the most common structure, just getting IRS detonation on something like that and setting up a board of directors, six months at least. So we will work as fast as we can to get you where you want to be as quickly as, but that first phase, we come back and say to you, it should be a X, I'd say two, two and a half months, three, absolutely, that's it.
Thanks. Kay, again?
Could you tell us what some of the trends you've seen develop in the tourism hospitality industry over the last 10 years?
Well, of course, everything is online and video and handheld, and the dissemination of information and the ability to tell stories from a destination marketing perspective has never been more effective than it is today. There's, I think, an increased level of expectation of level of finish of an experience, customization, if you will, where I really spend most of my time is the changes in the destination marketing world, more so than hospitality, because, I mean, that's what we do. We only do destination marketing. That's it. And what we've seen really is, I think I mentioned it earlier, is this understanding out that it's not just heads and beds. Filling hotel rooms is absolutely crucial to what we do. I mean, it's our major funding source, but just because we've got great rooms, the Hyatt, you know, notwithstanding, in most community, that's not why people are coming, is to stay in your rooms. They're coming for the experience. So it's kind of like if you're familiar with the book Start With Why from Simon Sinek, he says, the best organizations, the best products always start with why. And why isn't it that I've got a hotel room to sell? What I have is a wonderful experience, and oh, by the way, we have some hotels, so if you'd like to stay and not go home, this would be great. What that has evolved to is through research from Longwoods International that last summer has made a very clear case that for people who are exposed to tourism protection, so for people who come to visit, there is a 10 to 15, almost a 20% spike if they do both, in the likability and the consideration of that community as a potential place to live, go to school, start business. That's a lot bigger than just visiting for a long weekend. And so we now say that tourism and destination marketing is the essentially first date for economic development. Without the work of a DMO, economic development has a tougher road to hoe. And with a DMO and an EDC working together, then, I mean, you could, and both become far more successful again because there is that symbiotic relationship. So we're seeing destination marketing organizations become more destination management organizations, some of them understanding that maybe the product isn't quite fully baked. Maybe we need to do some cleanup. Maybe we need to advocate for better signage. Maybe we, you know, need to uplight the river work, and the city doesn't have the money. And so we go out and fundraise for that. That has been the game plan for the Rockford, Illinois Convention and Visitors Bureau for the past five years. It has not been a particularly attractive destination, and so they're putting most of their time making it more attractive and getting ready now to flip back to the marketing side as it really begins to grow. The downtown's coming back nicely, and so we see that. We also see, there's been this kind of unwritten rule that you don't do marketing within 70 miles of the town that you're marketing because those people can probably drive home. And well, if they're not going to spend the night, there's something about working. That unwritten rule has really begun to kind of fade away into the woodwork because we've done some research, and frankly, research in the state of Texas that shows that in the Dallas metroplex, those people are staying in Dallas metroplex hotels for long weekends, a large number of them. And so it doesn't make any difference where that zip code comes from. Let's find a reason why they want to spend the night, and that means increasing nightlife or getting the culinary offerings to a high level, multi-day events, all kinds of things that will go into causing somebody to say, hey, let's do a long weekend investor.
Okay. Yeah, let's start with our, thank you, let's start with our committee members, and Debbie, call on them any way you want to.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Any committee members want to start out? Oh, we've had Kay, so she's up here with us. So that's just to you, all right.
My name's Bill Ennis. Congratulations, you come recommended by some of the DMOs already in existence in Texas.
Thank you.
And that's a blessing, I'm sure.
We've got friends in Texas.
What are the conditions you rely on in recommending whether a DMO should be a city department or a 501(c)(6)?
And there are, there are pros and cons of every one of the structures. City, the one thing that holds me back from a city department oftentimes is if the city wants to treat the DMO like every other department, with the same kind of salary restrictions, same kind of procurement restrictions. We were joking about this in one of the previous transitions that we did from county to independent, and one of the county commissioners was just really, he could not see clear to having a dispensation for the DMO that they're treated differently. And I said, really? I said, does every department have the opportunity to exceed the speed limit and wear guns? Because you let the sheriff do that. I said, so there are instances where, and understand that what marketing is, is very, very different than, you know, water and sewer and roads and the kind of procurement that makes perfect sense across most departments of a city. And this is one of the reasons why I think that the county department in Fort Lauderdale has been so successful, is they are treated absolutely differently. I mean, so they still have the same controls, the same sunshine laws, the same reporting. It's just, there isn't like this, you know, trying to fit somebody into a job description or a job salary that just doesn't match up with the industry. On the other side of the coin, and I can tell you this from Irving, Texas, Maura, the director there, says, you know, we wouldn't have built this convention center if we were a standalone 501(c)(6). She goes, because I can walk into the mayor's, I can walk into any department's door, and we can get something done really, really fast. And so she said, we really find that the city department serves us well here, Irving, but then they don't hold her to some of the same standards that they would to maybe police and fire.
Great. Thank you. I have one other question, and that is, Bastrop is blessed with many areas that could attract tourists, a river, our history, et cetera, et cetera. In your proposal, would you help us develop a message, or is that the job of the actual DMO board?
I would see that as the job of the next or the first DMO director and his or her staff, in concert with whoever they engage to do their creative and ad work, and some DMOs bring creative and marketing in-house and do it all by themselves without outside assistance. Having said that, obviously, I'm going to spend a lot of time in Bastrop, and if I see something, we'll add it into the report and say, we would certainly recommend that, you know, we see a huge opportunity here that you may not see. In fact, we were doing some work in the hills of North Carolina a couple of months ago, and they completely do not see that they're at the foothills of the Yadkin Wine Valley. I mean, they're talking about their conference center, they're talking about their baseball and soccer facilities, and they're talking about, you know, these cute little downtowns. I'm sorry, the wine trail that they're at the absolute base of, that's it. And while we weren't there to talk and work on their marketing, we said, guys, you know, look at the wine thing because that's probably your ticket. So if we see it, we'll say it, but we don't see that as really our wheelhouse.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee?
Hi, Bill. My name is Lee Hall with the, with the Bastrop Chamber. So we're addressing creating a DMO because we don't necessarily have a DMO, but at the same time, it is kind of a transition because we do have the BMC like you referenced.
Right.
So one of the concerns, and I'll tell you, is in addition to being with the chamber, I run a recreational river company here in town.
Okay.
We're very tourism focused. So there's this concern that as, and I think this is pretty wide, a lot of people have mentioned this in different ways, that as we go through trying to create this DMO or go through this transition, that we're going to lose, lose out on not doing any marketing or not continuing on with what's, with what's happened in the past.
Okay.
And then also making sure that whenever, whatever we come up with, doesn't just totally disregard everything that's done.
Right.
But, you know, so what, how would you address that and ensuring us that through this process that it could take longer than we want it to, that we're not just going to lose what presence we have out there?
Right. And that's going to be the trick, isn't it? That's how we have to marry the two concepts, assuming that the DMO goes forward. And part of this could very well be semantics. I mean, I guess I wouldn't right off the bat think that everything that gets thrown out with the bathwater that's gone before, that we'd want to build on all that. And I would think that the DMO would actually make you, probably give you the opportunity to be more creative, faster to market, ability to test new messaging concepts, not knowing really how the whole BMC was structured, but I would think that having a DMO that is not tied, again, with all due respect to the resort, I think would be a good thing. And I think, I think it gives you more opportunities, it gives you more diversity of message. So I would absolutely agree that you want to build upon what you have. You don't want to toss it out, but at some point in time, it needs to evolve into its own message.
One more question, too. So when it comes to heads and beds, the resort obviously being, you know, very well-performing resort, we do have other hotels in town.
Yeah.
But they're not necessarily looked at as, you know, a destination hotel.
Right.
So what do you have to say about how that, how that plays into the mix?
Well, and again, this is going to get into the marketing plan that is ultimately developed for whatever structured DMO you have, but in my mind, you know, there is a hotel for every type of visitor, and so you've got a diverse number of types of experiences out there that frankly, the Hampton's perfect for that one, and maybe the Best Western is perfect for that one. You know, there's a, there's a segment of meeting and conference business called SMURF, and it's not the little blue guys. It's social, military, education, religious, and fraternal. Those are groups that oftentimes won't stay at the Hyatt because they're running on really tight expense accounts. And so there's, there's an opportunity to segment the kind of marketing you do into the kinds of markets that these hotels outside of the Hyatt would, would actually have a great deal of appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What do you envision as the final tangible products of your work when this project is completed?
We would expect, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. We would expect that you would get a documentation that would outline all of the intel that we got from research, all of the intel we received from our face-to-face and online survey work. You would get a pros and cons list of why, you know, a, let's say, an independent 501(c)(6) is appropriate, but in these cases, it wouldn't be, so you'd have to do, you know, A through G for the 501(c)(6). And if you can't or are not willing to do that, then it probably should be a city department or whatever. So we would have ultimately a recommendation for you with a timeline for implementation and our suggested timelines. But you have all that background so that you could go back and say, well, you know, I get where he's going with this, but we don't think that he truly understands X. And then you see in my, you know, you've got to do one of these, you've got to do these seven things, or it's not going to work. And you'll say, I don't think he can do two, and you said, now we're going to bounce over to a different recommendation. over to a different recommendation." I mean, we're going to work with you. I can't imagine that we're going to come to a point in time where my recommendations would be a surprise to anybody. And I really want to work with you to make sure that it works for you. I mean, that's one of the things that we say. Now, you don't build a destination for visitors. You build it for residents, but if you build it smart, then visitors will beat a path to your door. Same thing here. We need to build, build a DMO that matches the community's needs, wants, and expectations. And at this point in time, I couldn't tell you what that looks like. I have to get on the ground to find out.
Thank you.
Okay. I just would like to get from you some sort of a range as far as cost. I think that's appropriate.
That's a really good question. And then because, and I don't mean to dodge this, but the issue for us is, how many people do you believe need face-to-face time? I mean, if this is going to be, you know, 10 days of face-to-face interviews, that's going to get up there. So, you know, it's one of those things where, I can tell you that our work in Aurora 10 years ago was, I'd say, probably in the 70, 75,000 range. It could probably go, again, when we, when we get a better sense of how much handholding needs to happen, how much face-to-face interaction needs to happen, it could go anywhere from, I'd say, 60 to 100. I know, that's a, that's a big range, I know. But this is, you only, you only get one chance on this, and it's one of those things where a lot of people need to have that personal touch.
Thanks.
I thought of earlier, no?
Sure.
I forgot. So you're talking about the on-the-ground when you come to Bastrop?
Yep.
Is that you? Is that a team? Is that staff that you have? Who are? Is your, I'm going to be one of the people you're talking to. Y'all want to know who I'm talking to?
It'll probably be my partner and I, Terry White and me. I mean, that's, that's the company. We use a number of contractors when we do destination assessments, for example, which is essentially secret shopping of community, and then come back with our recommendations for better signage and better, you know, interpretation of the museum and better this and better that. We will, we'll try to line up, line up a millennial. We'll line up some diversity. We'll line up, you know, the right kinds of people for the destination. But when it really just comes to governance and revenue streams and organizational structure, it really is Terry and I. Thanks.
Okay. Doors open. Hey, Mike? I'm not kind of late, but I'm just waiting.
Hi. My name's Becky Womble. I'm the president of the Bastrop Chamber, and I'm going to ask you, at what point would you recommend a strategic plan is written? During the creation, the organization, or after, at least, and possibly a board?
Yeah, that's, that is a great question, because you don't want to tie the hands of your new CEO when he or she arrives. But our version of what a strategic plan is, is what's going to make the organization and the destination better, not the marketing plan. So I would think that most CEOs would be elated to have a strategic plan from which they don't have to worry about organizational and destination for their first year, and they can focus on the marketing plan. So I would suggest that you do it before that person is on board rather than later, but it can go either way. I think that the work we're going to do here, I'd hate to promise anything, but I could probably almost develop a strategic plan for you with just the information that we're getting in our face-to-face conversations and survey. I mean, that's really what our strategic planning service is, is we, we do an online survey of the community. We go in, we talk to people for a couple of days, and then we sit down with the board and decide, "Okay, here are the 10 things they talked about. Let's pick four and focus on them really hard." And those two right there, those are better at the chamber, and that one's better at economic development, and that's better at the arts council. So let's hand that off to them and see if they'll pick it up. But we're going to do these. And again, I, you know, I would think that I'd have a pretty good sense of, of where the opportunities are for both organization and destination, just by the conversations we have.
Thanks.
Thanks. Good question. Going once? Going twice? You want to close this out, Mike?
Can I give you my?
Anything else you want to say, and then we'll say goodbye? I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. As I said at the outset, the resources that you have at your disposal, the assets you have at Bastrop, your location next to the Austin Airport, there's, this is a sky's-the-limite proposition, and I'd love to be your partner and advisor on this. And so again, thanks for taking time out. I'm very impressed with the number of people who turned out today. Thanks for doing that.
Can you hold on just one second?
For the conversation continuing.
Can you hold on one second?
Ah, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to ask our senior advisor and our, our ICM if you have any questions. You're good? You're good? Okay, then. Thank you.
I have a question. If you get this job, would you be willing for me to teach you how to pronounce the name of our town? It's Bastrop.
Am I saying it?
Yeah, you're Bastrop-ing. That's a little, you're a little Louisiana for us today, so it's Bastrop. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, you say y'all. I say y'all.
Well, y'all's good enough, too. Thank you very much. What do we do with this? Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to look at the top and put it in the TV. We'll have this one. You might want to take it out where you're sitting. We're going to have several screens, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think a very effective job, Colin and Andreas. First time we've done that, so hope we can save a fortune in the future. Just quit trucking people down here. We'll just talk to them on the television. Okay, Mike, I think we're about ready for you.
This is a second firm selected by the National Committee. It was a joint submitted by the St. Young Strategy. We have Mr. Berkeley Young, excuse me, from Young Strategies. He was a key fellow with Destination Services, and it's all under the name of the company.
Okay. Very good. Good afternoon. I'm Berkeley Young.
Young, would you rather have a, well, we've got you on television. Would you rather have a walking-around mic? We want to make sure everybody can hear you that's home on, some people just put their pajamas on and have adult drinks and watch us, apparently, so I would, wouldn't want them to miss what you have to say.
My family always tells me to quiet down.
Well, it'll be good. Thank you.
Let's see. So Steve, I was going to stand next to you. We'll share. We will share.
Is that mine up there? Yes. Is that mine? Is that one portable? Could we work? You need this one.
Or that one?
The others have got bikes up here, so y'all.
Okay. Try to stand where we don't have our backs to anyone. Good afternoon. My name is Berkeley Young. Yes? Oh, you'll get feedback? Okay. I'm Berkeley Young, and this is Steve Powell. I'm out of Charlotte, North Carolina. My company, Young Strategies, does research and strategic planning for destinations around the United States. We have a little bit of background on us here that we've worked in 27 states, and during the course of my work back in the 1990s, I actually started a DMO. I was running a Chamber of Commerce in a community in North Carolina, and I was hired, they had just implemented a hotel tax, and so I was hired to start up the organization from the very beginning. It was actually before the internet. So all we needed was some brochures and billboards and a desk and an 800 number, and we were good to go. And then we had to evolve and grow from there. Around 1998, '99, I started working with communities around the United States, helping them develop and implement DMOs and planning for destinations, and had the pleasure of working with Steve Powell, who was one of our clients, and I'll let Steve tell you about his experience. It might be on a delay.
No, we got a page, so that's fair enough.
Okay. It was on mute. Good afternoon. My name is Steve Powell, and Berkeley's right, we started working together. He was, I was a client in his, when I was doing the, actually running a DMO in St. Charles, Missouri. I started that DMO in 1988, and essentially grew that DMO from a half-million-dollar tourism budget to a destination that had 14 major attractions and $2.8 million over a 19-year period. It's actually a lot like Bastrop. It's a 12-block historic district. It's the main attraction. We're the largest historic district in the state of Missouri. I actually own five historic properties there and operate some lodging. My wife operates lodging accommodations there. So I've had major experience in terms of DMO operation and also worked a little bit in Peoria, Illinois, running their, their DMO.
Great. And so along the way, Steve also worked with convention centers, and I guess at Young Strategies and Destination Services, we collect people along the way. And so our head of research is Dr. Larry Guske, who actually got his PhD at Texas A&amp;M, and he developed the methodology that we use and implement. I know I just made some minimes in the room. Never smart to venture into that. But then we have Alexa Gifford from upstate New York, who ran a 16-county regional tourism promotion organization, dealing with collective tax organizations in all those counties. And then we also have Amy Stevens, who hails from Michigan and works with us and kind of does all of our research. So we have a team approach, and we come at it from many angles. And as you can see on this map, we've worked in a lot of places around the country, and we've seen a lot of different things. And we've seen everything from city departments that are destination marketing organizations to fully independent organizations, to chambers of commerce and economic development groups. And so as we've traveled the country, we've realized you have to engage with a community, that we need to spend a lot of time here talking with you and understanding what your goals are and what you're trying to achieve and what works best for you, because it's not a one-size-fits-all method of just, "This is the program of work, and this is what you need to do." It's different from community to community. And yes, we've worked with some other communities here in Texas, and it's even different among those. So we always begin by exploring the destination we're in, and, and we want to work with you, which is why we took the time to come down here. We actually are working in Oklahoma tomorrow, so it was just convenient to reroute our travels and come here so we could see the town, spend some time roaming around today, see some things, and it confirmed for us that we want to work with you, and that's why we're here. So a few trends I wanted to hit on, and these are things that you have to keep in mind as you form a DMO, that the traveling public is not the average American. The people who travel, and we'll dig into this a little deeper in a minute, but the people who travel have different behaviors, different income levels, different demographics than the average American. And so they're out there, people who travel frequently, it's all about the quest for authentic and unique, because there's somewhat of a been-there-done-that, and small towns are popular now, but it's what makes you unique. And the fact is, the name Bastrop, other than Louisiana, is a pretty darn unique name. And so to a certain extent, there's a lot of branding agencies that want to charge you a lot of money to brand you, but to a great extent, it's about name recognition and putting experience with name. And when you already have such a unique name and such a unique history, then it's not really complicated to put a brand with that. And so it's more about understanding, who are the travelers that were, would come here, and what do we do to get them to come? And I'm struggling with my, there comes a whole bunch at one time. So it's all about, the one thing we see out there is boutique brand proliferation, and I put this in there squeaky and leaky for Steve because he's an innkeeper and he runs small inns. And so it's even in the world of in-keeping now, everybody wants unique, and what we have seen is the Hampton Inns, the Best Westerns, these chain hotels learning to be more local and put local art and local things to act more like bed-and-breakfast inns and local inns. And we've seen small bed-and-breakfast inns learning to act more like chain hotels and have higher standards in in-keeping. And so there's a lot of change in the industry. And then there's this thing, the sharing economy. We work with far more small communities than large, and in all of them, they're dealing with, well, what about this Uber thing and Lyft and all the Airbnb and all the different ways people are booking and, and understanding how these, the taxes are collected. So we have to understand the impact that that's having in your community. Website design has to be intuitive and responsive, and that means it can't be like my website. If you go online and look at Young Strategies' website, it's a study in how not to do a website, because it's about eight years old. And I'm so busy critiquing your website that I haven't had time to update mine. Actually, it's being updated, and we'll have a new website coming out in a full month, a few months. But website design needs to work the same on a smartphone as it does on a laptop or a tablet, and so we have to understand these things. And even in a small town, even in a historic town, we have to be up to date because you're competing with big cities out there. And then there's big data. A lot of people are aggregating all these data sources from hotels and airlines, and one of our clients is Tupelo, Mississippi, and they bought a lot of big data from one of these companies, and what it told them was that their number-two point of origin for visitors was a town in Turkey, and number-one was Los Angeles. And it's because they have a large Toyota plant. The Toyota plant drives most of the rooms in the hotels, and those rooms are booked through booking engines that are based in Los Angeles and Turkey. So sometimes big data, by the time you dip out your share of big data, it would fit in a thimble. And so sometimes big solutions don't work, so we have to understand your visitors, who's staying in your hotels tonight, because on any given night, about half of your rooms are occupied, and those are people that have to eat dinner. They have to find where to eat and what to do and where to shop, where to spend their dollars, and that's a few hundred people on a given night that are looking to spend money in this community. We need to understand them, and so research is a component of our plan. And then the shift where boomers are going from irrational exuberance over the last two decades to being very cautious travelers who are focused on retirement, and the millennials are kicking in. And now we're going really fast. There we go. This is a population density map of Texas, and I put a star over you, and I studied really hard to make sure I was on the right county. And you can see that, I put that circle around, if you've got over 25 million people in Texas, right above your star is a little star. You see that? That's the population center of Texas, which basically says, you may not be in the geographic center of Texas, but you're right in the middle of the people. And so you have arguably tens of millions of people within a four-hour, five-hour drive who can come here, and we just need at the very basic to understand how we get our share of that, and then we start going beyond and looking at fly markets and other things. Now, here we go. There. So what we have proposed, well, it's all going to come at once, is we proposed a study that engages leaders, that we're a big believer in communicating with you one-on-one. We're going to come in and spend about five to six days here in the community with a team of us, and we're going to engage in your leaders, and we're really going to explore and make sure. The one thing we don't want is at the end of the study to have anybody say to us, "Well, did you look into so-and-so?" and us not know about it. We want to know everything, all the secrets, everything, so that we can address all the issues. And so, you know, we're And so, you know, we're going to develop an organizational structure for a new DMO. And yes, we've seen just about every structure out there. We've got all the templates for everything, from job descriptions and staff org charts and board org charts and board structures. But we're going to make sure it's a structure that works for you. We're going to do research and identify the segmented markets, because we're not just going to come in and say, and here's your structure, and here's your board structure, and here's your staff structure, good luck with it. We've got to give you a plan of now what are you going to do, and how do you move forward, and what visitors are you going after, and what are the measurement tools to know it's working? And so we're going to do a segmented analysis of the visitors that are coming here and develop a plan for you by segment of what will drive increased visitation. We need to identify the attractors and the motivators. And it's plain and simple, every town has a bunch of attractions, but we need to understand the attractors, those things that motivate people to come, because we use that to get them to come, and then that gets them to do everything, once they're here. So we need to understand the guest mix of the hotels, who's staying in them, and the target markets, the segments, the strategies, where are they coming from, and then how do we go after each of those segments? Is it a business traveler? Is it a leisure traveler? Is it conference meeting group, team sports? Sports is pretty big in Texas, and so there should definitely be some kind of sports component in there. And then we also need to understand the peaks and valleys, because if you're already sold out during a certain period, well, we don't need to market that anymore. We need to understand where are the valleys, where are the slow periods in the year, and how do we get people to come then? So the convention and group market in general is important, and that relates to sports and all groups that come here. In fact, we were out at the Hyatt today and saw them hosting some conference groups. And so it's definitely a part of your market. And so we're going to give you an overall comprehensive strategic plan, and we'll do it in phases. So we help you get the organization set up. We're going to help you get the staffing in place, full board structure, staff structure, budgets, everything, all of your documents and controls, and then lead you through a process into developing the marketing plan of how you're going to position and market yourself in the competitive market. So the steps are site visit reconnaissance and leader interviews, and that would commence as soon as you tell us you're ready to go. We're going to take a hard look at other best practices of DMO structures and see how it relates to you and what works best, based on the interviews we do with you. We're going to do leader, community leader surveys and interviews. And then we're going to do visitor research, and we're going to partner with everybody in town that's got a database of anybody who's visited here. And we'll send an online survey to understand the visitor patterns. Then we're also going to survey residents, and any residents that want to take our survey, because typically, as much as a third of the visitors to a town are staying in your homes when you visit. And so we always like to remind you, you can help the local economy and enjoy your relatives more if you put them in a hotel. But we need to understand what you, as residents, are doing with those visitors when they come. And so, and we'll also layer in a very detailed lodging market analysis, so that we work closely with all your hoteliers to understand the people staying in the hotels and what's driving the overnight visitation. An overnight visitor will spend two to three times as much as a day trip. We want day trippers, absolutely. You're too close to a big metropolitan market all around you, a lot of cities around you. But we really want to focus on the overnight and take the day trip also. And so then, once we would develop the structure and organizational plan for your DMO and help you get that up and running, then we would work through workshops with you to develop a research report and guide the strategic planning effort and conduct a planning workshop. We are very big in putting the research before you and then working with you as a team to say, okay, what do we could do with the research? How are we going to allocate our efforts and our funds with this new DMO to move forward? And then we'll help you oversee the initial implementation of the plan and put measurements in place, so you can track and know if you're succeeding or not. So I thought I'd show you this one slide from Buffalo, New York, a project we did. That squiggly line at the top is the supply of hotel rooms for every month, going back to January of 2009. And so you can see the pattern repeats itself, and the low dip every year is February. And so that's the, you know, same number of rooms in the market, but less days. And then all the little jagged up and downs are the months with 30 days or 31. And so you can see, they've slowly added rooms to the market. If you look, you can see February of 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14, and they've slowly added hotels. And so the supply of rooms has steadily grown over the year, and February is always the low point. This is the actual room nights sold. And what this shows in Buffalo is every year, July and August, that are the two months when it gets over freezing, and it warms up a little bit in Buffalo, those two months of the year, they are sold to the wall. You can hardly get a room. It's really Sunday nights, the only time you can get a night in Buffalo. So there's absolutely no reason in the world for them to promote anything during those two months, right? And so the name of the game is to focus on the valleys. Let's pull up those dips. It's like a Head Start program. And yes, it's actually rather delightful to visit Buffalo in the winter, because, well, they handle snow so efficiently. They can have a blizzard, and 20 minutes later, the roads are clear, and it's delightful. And pretty amazing history and things to see. And so what you see is a growth trend, but the pattern is the same. And so we need to focus on those shelters and lows. And if you look along the sides of the mountain peaks, those are major groups and events that cause those spikes. And it's the power of team sports and other special events to bring people in. So that's what we want to focus on for you. This is their segmentation. We surveyed their hotels and said, please tell us in 2014, who stayed in your hotels? And so what we saw was about 37% were business transient, business travelers, 32% were leisure travelers, 25% were group meetings, conference events, 6.5% were miscellaneous. Healthcare is a big deal these days, driving a lot of rooms. And so this helps us understand, how do we allocate our funds and resources to go after increased room nights for the markets? Now, this is a pretty standard. We work, during the course of the year, I do board retreats about every month with different organizations to help their boards be efficient. This is a pretty standard structure. You want a board in that pyramid on the top that is focused on the vision and plan and the long-term vision of where are we going as a destination? And that's the destination management side. That's the DMO. And then you want a staff team that's focused on running the DMO and marketing the destination. And a lot of times, we see boards that want to get all involved in what color, what picture's going on the visitor guide, and what color's the logo. And we need a board that's focused on, what is Bastrop going to look like in 25 years, 10 years? Where are we going? What do we need to keep Bastrop thriving and growing? And so it's all about long-range vision, policy, and oversight for a board, and then a really smart team that gets the work done and reports back. So going forward, I'm going to leave you with these thoughts. You need a unique plan tailored to what makes you unique. This is a very special place, very unique place, so you don't need somebody to come in and give you a boilerplate from another destination. We need to really peel back the layers, understand what makes you tick, work with you. By the end of the study, we want to know every one of you on a first-name basis and be seen as your partner, helping you build your DMO. We don't want to be the consultant that comes in and tells you what to do. And we just jumped all over the place. Let's, we'll just go manual here. That was my big finish. Oh, well, there's the funny-looking people. Let's do it this manual way. All technology has flaws, right? We're here because we want to work with you. We want to be part of your team. We're going to engage you as leaders. We're going to engage your travel industry, work with all your attractions, your restaurants, your hotels. We're going to do a whole lot of listening before we even think about offering a suggestion. We want to make sure we understand the issues. And you'll all be a part of the planning process. The fact that you're here tonight says you're really interested in this and really engaged. And so we would obviously start with you in this room as being a part of the planning, because for us, it's all about partnership and the experience. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
If I could add just a couple of things. We've been to many, many destinations. I've been in this business for 33 years, and I am very impressed with your destination, because you have the products, you have everything really you need to make a highly successful DMO. And you have available funds, you have a revenue source in place. Many times, we go to places, it's totally the opposite. We're in a long-term planning mode to get the product in place, the attractions and the attractors in place. But you all have that. I mean, that's very impressive. You do not see that very often.
Well, this is a unique place, and we've been in some towns where we think, wow, it's square and flat and everything's numbered, what are we going to do with this? And you have lots to work with. And so there's some places that the term destination is used loosely, but you are a destination. Thank you. Council members?
From what you've learned about Bastrop, what market segments would you think we would want to be looking at more closely?
Absolutely, you're a leisure destination. And so I think you have great year-round potential there. Then we'd want to look at your group segments to understand how we match up facility availability with room night availability. And so we've seen some cases like Buffalo, where they have plenty of ball fields that are available to host tournaments in July and August, but if all the hotels are sold out, that strategy doesn't work. And so in their case, it was about what facilities for group are available. When we worked in Syracuse, we actually took their convention center calendar of all the days it was available and matched it to the hotel occupancy, so we could show specific days in the year when hotels were low, convention center was low, and those were the days to fill those groups, or fill with groups.
But I would say also that that's really what the research is about. When we do the research, we will fine-tune just what Berkeley said and know specifically where we have to address, put strategies in to address those issues.
So my question is timeline?
We would come in, and the initial discovery phase would take us every bit. We would want to have a structure, working in partnership with you, to have a recommended structure on November, December. We think that you only get one chance to get it right, and we don't want to rush that. And we want to make sure that we've overturned every stone we can, to make sure we get it right and get a structure you're pleased with. We would then be laying in visitor research, so that we could be developing strategic plans for the organization and getting staff in place, January, February, March, April.
I know it's very premature, but can you give us an idea of a cost?
The RFP that you put out was very comprehensive. And to meet what's in the RFP, at minimum, is you're looking in the 70,000 to 80,000 range. And then, you know, if we layer in the visitor research and everything that we want you to have to get off on a good start, then you're looking over $100,000 over a year.
And I might point out, that's 920 hours of labor essentially being put into the project over roughly almost an 11-month process.
Back in '93, the organization that hired me, they collected bed tax for 18 months and developed, at that time, a war chest of $350,000. And at that time, they allocated $100,000 to put their strategic plan in place. They said they would not spend $1 on advertising or anything until they were sure they had a plan in place. Do you, what towns in Texas have you worked with? Nacogdoches and Lubbock. What was the last one? I'm sorry? What was the second one? Lubbock. Lubbock, okay. Let's, Lee, you want to, you got anything? And then we'll go with Bill.
My name is Lee Hall. I'm with the Chamber of Commerce, and I also own a river recreation business in town. So one of the concerns that a lot of people have is, as we go through this creation of a new DMO, transition from the BMC model that we have right now, that things might come to a slowdown or a halt as far as what marketing is happening out there. And myself and a lot of others are concerned about that, because we're already in the business, out there in the trenches, trying to bring tourists in, cater to that. So this first question will be, how does that transition look? What should we be doing as we're going through the process of the new DMO with?
If you already have a program in place, and if you're already putting some advertising out there, why would you just pull the plug and stop and wait a year? And so I would say, you know, keep plowing the field you're in until we have a new plow.
Okay. The second question is, during the discovery phase, when you all actually come here, who is it that we're going to be meeting with? What's your team?
Team of each, for sure. It'll be Steve and myself, plus Dr. Larry Guske, and so we'll have to determine who he can and can't meet with, based on his education background. So it'll be three of us.
Yeah, it's typically three of us. We're usually the ones that come in first and gather all the information, you know, turn over the stones and all those kind of things. But we basically each have individual skills that are applied. Mine's basically from the destination marketing component of it and organizational structure. Berkeley works, you know, with leadership, boards, organization structures, and taking a look at, you know, just how the entire mechanism works. So we all feed off each other. So we go through this whole process, and at the end of the day, we, you know, we sit down, we pair notes, and come up with, start looking at where we need to.
Well, and I started, I was running a chamber before I ran a DMO, and there is a definite role for each, and the plans got to show a vital role for each, working in partnership to promote the destination.
And final question is, when it comes to organizational structure, there's a few different options out there, more than a few, some that seem to float to the surface more. Can you give us some examples of some DMOs that you've worked with, maybe in transition, that you've helped them change to, from one thing to another, and why one structure made more sense than another to one particular community?
Sure. Just finished a project in Syracuse, New York, transitioning their DMO was part of a group called Center State CEO, which was all economic development, Chamber EDC, DMO everybody in one. And they wanted to transition to be an independent DMO, and it was mainly because in New York State, the way the funding is structured, and it's pretty complicated, the way tax funds go to the state and are remitted back to locality, that the DMO, when you're marketing a destination, you need to move pretty fast, buying ads, and especially in the digital world, and there were times when it was taking four and five months just to get a check cut. And so they needed to be a more nimble organization. And so they are, on paper and finances, independent, but they continue to share offices and their teams in the same big open office space, and they're all working together. But, you know, they're a fully independent organization now, in transitioning. In Stanton, Virginia, they're Department of the City. And it's interesting, in the state of Virginia, they're a commonwealth, and so their cities are donut holes cut out of the county. So you're either in the city or you're in the county, but you're not in both. And so there, due to local politics and everything, it made best sense, because the county contributed no fund. county contributed no funding and in their case, it made best sense to keep them with the city as a fully operational city department. Panama City Beach, Florida is one of our larger clients. We're on retainer with them for the last six years. And it's, they're a county tourism development authority, but they only promote Panama City Beach, which is a city. And so they are a quasi-independent organization that still has to work very closely with the city and the county. And they actually hold their meetings in city council chambers. And they've recently formed a new, they put in a new bed tax for the town of Panama City, which is also in Bay County. And so we helped them transition and set that up as an independent entity where it's all kind of in one pot, the funds going to the county, but then dispersed to each city. And so we've seen just a little bit of everything out there.
Yeah, and many times what you'll see is that you'll start out one way and as the destination grows and gets more complex, then it changes to another organizational structure. It just kind of depends. Each place is independent. It just, you know, it kind of depends on how that destination grows or doesn't grow or what have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. We noted several mentions in your response to honesty and transparency, the avoidance of conflicts of interest, codes of ethics and operational protocols. Have you had any experiences with these types of organizations, DMOs, CVBs, et cetera, where those kinds of issues have been a problem? And could you please elaborate if you have?
Yeah, yeah. Just last week, I was informed of a DMO that hired one of their largest hoteliers to be the director of the DMO. And they didn't, you know, and I said, well, you've immediately got to have a disclosure of the conflict because what happens if they bring in a travel writer who does a cover story on his end and not the other ends? And he's the DMO director? And that hadn't occurred to them. So it's really, DMOs have the ability to get in a lot of trouble if you don't have all these policies in place. And, you know, I've seen communities where, gosh, where was I recently? I was, oh, I was in Mississippi. I was in Oxford, Mississippi, SEC town. And they are building hotels like mad. I mean, they, and building, they're a very small town, building very high-end luxury hotels. In fact, a Texas developer is putting a hotel there that's going to be 32 rooms that will start at $800 a night for a room. Yes. And so, but they have a policy. They are a city department and they have a policy that no one can be on the board. If someone's on the board, then the CBB can do no business with them. Well, what that means is no hoteliers can be on the board. And so now we've got a board of, I mean, do you not want, I mean, it would be like having a board of realtors with no realtors, you know? I mean, so you need to have industry people who have a stake in the industry represented on the board, but you need to have very clear statements of what their conflict is and they need to have policies that if it involves their business in any way, how to recuse themselves, get up and leave the room and not exert any undue influence. And so all those procedures need to be locked down really tight.
It's a matter of spending the public's money.
Bill? Sorry.
It's a matter of trust. It's a matter of the public trust.
Thank you.
Bill? We put this bill and then that bill. Sorry, wrong bill. I got a bill over here.
One quick question. I just have to pick up, you said that you're kind of behind with your website and again, you said you'd come in and help our board directors at staffing and so forth. So how would you do that and be able to get our board set up with a good running website, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Absolutely. And that's what we do and we help you find the right, we work closely with the organizations, the DMOs that we work with, to help them get the right contractors to do that. I mean, we're not website developers, we're not an advertising agency. We're a research and planning firm. And so yes, I am the cobbler son that has no shoes, that spends so much time helping my clients with their websites that I don't pay attention to mine.
Since Lee went first and stole all my good questions, I've just got one. When you get all the attractors identified, when you come back with a strategic plan, does that include branding? Does it, do you develop what you would recommend as the main attractors to Bastrop? And the reason for my question is through the years, we've tried to identify ourselves. Is it the river? Is it our historic background? Is it the park? What is it that brings people? And what do we play on to get people here? And furthermore, what would you recommend our branding be if we get to that point?
I'm kind of anarchist when it comes to branding because I think branding's gone wild and everybody is, communities all over America are paying $100,000 to get a logo and they think that that's a brand. And the fact is, a brand is more about lifestyle. And so our research, and that's the whole point of layering in the visitor research in this, is the, between the visitors and the citizens and the leaders, we'll find common themes that help us understand with a name like Bastrop, I mean, it's easy to brand yourself. It's just a matter of what message do we put with that that will, a motivational message that will get them there. So our research will identify all the elements of a brand and then you just need some creative person to put the graphics to it.
More than likely, you'll find different motivators for different demographics of people. So what motivates a guy to grab a kayak and go out on the Colorado River might not be the same thing that motivates someone to go to the Performing Arts Center and see a ballet production. So there's different motivating messages per demographic. So we've worked with quite a few people in terms of branding and it really gets down to who you are, what do you want to be? What's the, what's the lifestyle that's going to really appeal? And as I read the RFP, I noticed, and I told Berkeley this on the way up here, that you all are very concerned that tourism doesn't impact your lifestyle, your community. You want it to supplement and complement your community, but you don't want it to necessarily change your community. And that's a very good point for you all to be at because many places will go in and they'll have tourism come in and they'll promote the heck out of it and the next thing they know, they have an event that's exceeding their capacity for them to handle it traffic-wise, you know, public service-wise and what have you. And at that point, as Berkeley told me, tourism has failed. It's failed at that point because it's impacted your lifestyle, your community, the way you want to live your lives. And so that's what we try to do. We try to develop through research those things that will drive the type of business that you all want and drive the highest economic impact to your community.
Oxford, Mississippi has 32 days of the year due to football graduation and a few other things. When they exceed their carrying capacity, and what that means is they are just gridlocked. They are just choking on people. I mean, you have a town of less than 10,000 residents with a football stadium that they're expanding now to hold 64,000. I mean, and so all the locals perceive that as tourism, as traffic jams and gridlock. And that is not tourism. That's traffic jams and gridlock. And, you know, we spend a lot of time in Oxford helping them understand the dollars and cents that if their hotels were in 60% occupancy every night of the year, the tens of millions of dollars of spending, and it would only be a few hundred people a day and it would not negatively affect traffic patterns, et cetera. And so it's steady incremental growth every day of the year because the goose that laid the golden egg is Bastrop. And so you don't want to change that. You want to keep the character of the place. That's what makes you unique.
So you know what the residents do in Oxford on those football weekends? They leave town. That's right.
And rent out their house for $10,000 a night. Yeah. They really do.
There's one last question for me. Why should a city of Bastrop, our young destination services, offer anyone else for this project?
We take a very personal approach to our work and we only have about five to eight clients a year. And so we're very focused and we work with you very closely. And most of our clients, we don't nickel and dime you after a study that we feel like we've done so much work with you and we're a part of you at that point, that we encourage you to follow up with us with phone calls and emails and things. The thing we really hate is when a client comes to us and says, hey, we just printed 100,000 of these, what do you think? Because at that point, we can't help you any. You've printed 100,000 of them. We want you to come to us and say, we're about to print 100,000, what do you think? So you would hire us because of our experience and our close working relationship and commitment to you.
And as you could tell from the RFQ response, we spent a great deal of time studying your destination and what kinds of product we need to bring to you to generate the destination that you might need. And so I think that, why should you hire us? I think we're the best, actually. I think we know exactly what we're doing and we know, we have people that will stand and say that Destination Services and Young Strategies has made their destination better.
Floor's open. Connor and Becky.
How are you doing, folks? My name is Connor McAnally. I'm a citizen here. Just before I ask you my question, I have two questions. First is to say thank you so much for coming down here and for taking the time to go around the town, have a look at it and have a look at the Hyatt and kind of get a handle on, you know, what this community is all about. So thank you for, all of us, for that.
Thanks for having us.
The first question is this, you talked about attractions and attractors and I'd love if you could give us an idea of what the difference between those two things are. Or start.
Most, I'll give you two examples that'll make it really clear. Most people go to Orlando for either Disney or Universal Studios and while they're there, they'll play mini golf and do a lot of other things. Unless they're playing in a tournament, they probably don't go to Orlando just to play mini golf. And so they go for one of the biggies. And so that's the Asheville, North Carolina is famous for the Biltmore Estate. Plains, Georgia, it's Jimmy Carter, you know? And so it's not a ticketed attraction, it's a person that lived there. And so it's not always a ticketed something or a tour or a something. And so we have to understand that which attracts the people here and how to promote it. And then that's the best shot at getting them to do everything else.
And the second question was, in terms of, how do you find that tourism and an increase in that through, you know, a good functioning DMO helps overall economic development in a town?
Well, a lot of people equate the travel industry, and I say travel industry because tourism is a part of it. And then you have, you know, business, traveling, convention, traveling, group travel, medical travel. If you have a courthouse, that drives room nights. So there is a travel industry here. And if you remember in the Buffalo case, those peaks and valleys mean seasonal workers. It means ramp up higher and layoff. And so our goal, if we pull the valleys up and table things off, we're creating more year-round jobs, more full-time jobs, full-time jobs with benefits. That has a dramatic effect. And so if you said, why? Because we want more visitors. Why do we want more visitors? Because we get more diners and shoppers. If we get more diners and shoppers and people that stay the night, we sell more gas. If we do that, we get more jobs. If we get more jobs, we have a growing economy. So it's long-term sustainable economic development.
We also find that, you know, when you travel someplace and it's, you think it's a place that you really want to learn more about. And what we have found in a lot of studies is that you find people that have traveled to an exceptional destination and they start looking at, well, maybe I can locate my corporation here. Maybe I can move my family, maybe I can retire here. And so that in itself, people want to live in a place that's like a proper destination.
I'm Becky Womble with the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. And it's, obviously you have an extensive list of qualifications and groups that you've worked with, but when I look at the population of those groups, I only see that there's only two on the list that are anywhere close to the size of our community. Most of them are 75,000 and above. Tell us how, what kind of expertise you bring to a community of our size.
Well, and actually, I would say the vast majority of the communities that we work with are very small communities. Oxford's a very small community. Abington, Virginia is certainly a very small community. Stanton, Virginia.
Rest of Tennessee.
Yeah. I mean, we work with far more smalls and I actually, the DMO that I started was in Rutherford County, North Carolina, and we didn't even have stoplights in Lake Lure and Chimney Rock. I mean, and so, you know, that's, we do.
I'm looking at Lubbock, Texas that has 239,000. Or Cedar Rapids, Iowa that has 128,000. I mean, those are huge communities compared to ours. I just see two on the list of past clients that are anywhere close to the size of our community.
Right. And we missed making that list and we should have listed all of our clients. I apologize. Because we certainly work with a lot of small communities or more small than big.
My name's Michelle Adams and I work with, I'm actually the president of the, not anymore Fine Arts Guild, it's the Lost Pines Art League. And we are building this huge building out here on Chestnut.
We saw that, we didn't know what that was.
That is going to be the art center, which is going to be a large community-involved building and concept. And I'm wondering, plus the fact we have lots and lots of talented artists in this area, not only in Bastrop, but Smithville, Georgetown, you know, all around. And I was wondering if you had worked with supporting and promoting art as a destination type thing?
I actually started a major art festival in St. Charles where I live called the Mosaics Art Festival. And we have worked with Barter Theater is a perfect example. In Abington, Virginia, we've done extensive work with those folks. So the answer is yes. Quite a number. Berkeley?
Yeah, and we also work with Hendersonville, North Carolina. The Barter Theater in Abington is the State Theater of North Carolina. And in Virginia, the Barter Theater is the State Theater of Virginia. And in Hendersonville, North Carolina, the Flat Rock Playhouse is the State Theater of North Carolina. And truly, in a lot of the destinations where we work, art plays a really critical role. And Hilton Head Island has put out an RFP right now where they're looking at a, you know, it became such a big resort destination, they're kind of pulling back and getting back to their true art core. And so Cheryl Hargrove, who's a nationally recognized figure in arts and heritage development, has worked with us for years and consults with us. And as part of that, we did a statewide submit byway study for Kansas and traveled through all the counties and places in Kansas. And we also work, and there's a fantastic Florence community in Kansas, and we work with all counties in Wyoming doing rural development work. And in every case, the first thing we do is look for the arts in the community because that's often what makes it unique and a special place. Another component of our research, you mentioned that you're developing product, is we have the ability to test new products and things that you're considering and doing. We can test messages, we can test experiences with the visitors and help in that aspect also. Yeah.
That's actually a perfect segue into my question was, you talk, you've got a small team of researchers who talk a lot about data. How do you actually gather that data that you're using to make your recommendation?
We, a variety of ways. The first thing we do is we seek out everybody with a database. Lodging properties usually have databases with email addresses and mailing addresses. Restaurants, attractions, any tourism businesses that have databases. And one of the little perks we do is that if any local business has a database of visitors, we will develop a unique link to our visitor survey. We'll provide it to them so that they can send it out to their database. They don't provide. They don't provide the database to us. They send it out to their database with their unique, with the unique link we provide them. And then as a thank you for participating in the research, we can give them a report of all the responses that came to their unique link. So that way, it helps get a lot of your local businesses engaged in the research process, and they're all getting back some research on their own visitors, and it helps us build. We'll typically get in the range of 1,000 to 2,000 visitor surveys for a destination of this size. Debbie?
I'm Deborah Johnson. I own Art Connections Gallery.
Pull that dimples down, Debbie. Too much.
Thank you, thank you. I've also worked with the Downtown Business Alliance and events quite extensively. What do you see the role of a DMO in terms of events with communities?
It's a big trend right now for DMOS, for the M to mean marketing and management, but at the same time, if they get too deep into managing the destination, they're no longer marketing it. And so it's easy to get so busy, quite frankly, in Oxford, Mississippi, when we started working with Oxford, they had, they have a one-day arts festival that's fantastic, the Double Decker Arts Festival, it's in first Saturday in May. 25% of the CBB budget and staff time was going into running a one-day festival. And so we had to point out that while it was very important to do that, 25% of the lodging tax collections for the year, plus the staff to a day, we had to make the question, what are you doing for the other 364 days with the remaining 75% of the funds? And so the answer is that they have worked over the years to bring in dedicated staff to handle that, to change the funding structure so that they're not completely running and they're working to make it more independent. So in essence, they're incubating it and growing it. One of the challenges they had was there was no coordination. So if you remember, I said there were 32 days in Oxford when they were over 100% occupancy, and the rest of the year, nothing. Well, they have a fabulous ballpark, FNC ballpark, they had the biggest softball tournament of the year the same day that they have the Double Decker Festival. And one of them needs to agree to go to the week before, the week after, when they're at 10% occupancy, because what happened by doing two major festivals on the same day, two major events, the beneficiaries were Tupelo and Batesville on either side of them that were getting all the room nights. So that's really, you should have been funding it. And so now, they're doing a much better job of coordinating and being cohesive and not duplicating events on the same day. And so a DMO should really identify, when do we need events? In fact, I was in Montgomery recently, and we were standing in the lobby of the Chamber of Commerce, and a woman came into the Chamber of Commerce and said, I need to check the master calendar. We're planning a new festival, and we want to know what's the slowest weekend to have it. And we all screamed yahoo! It's like, that's, they got it, you know? And so that's, festivals and events are very important, and so, but there needs to be a strategy behind them, and the DMO can help with that.
You know, you find so many times with events and DMOS that are in destinations that they do the event for the event's sake, and it's not really, there's no strategy to accomplish something with that event, whether it's driving room nights, or it's driving additional economic impact, or what have you. So you'll get these folks that love doing the event, but then they forget to market it, or they forget to, why they're doing the event. No one comes, and you've just wasted a bunch of money. So I think events play a very critical role in destination management.
Anybody else? Yeah. Mayor Scott, we're honored to have you present.
But I'm associated with the Chamber of Commerce tonight. How does your proposal address marketing as a destination within the destination of Bassdrop, our convention center across the street?
Ah, well, that gets into the whole segmentation analysis and understanding a facility like that, and most destinations, and this was certainly the case over in Nacogdoches, where they have a civic center, and it's all about finding that balance of, is it used for locals? And how do you make space available? How do you have booking policies so that you don't turn away overnight business for local business? And how do you find the balance of both? And so it's kind of the issue of, is it a civic center? Is it a convention center? And the roles of each, and then, you know, you can create events locally that drive a lot of room nights. And so ultimately, if you're taking tax from hotels, if you're taking bed tax from lodging to do promotion, then you want to make sure that whatever group you're bringing, whatever thing you're promoting, has a return on investment and a payoff of bringing more overnight visitors to the community. Thanks. Anyone else? Council members, anything else? I want, you got something?
I got a question.
I want to give you all a chance to close out. I think we're done with questions.
I got a question. Where do we get some good brisket?
There goes the debate, yep.
There we go.
Thank you very much. We're honored to be here. I just want to thank everyone for coming, especially our committee that did the sifting. Please, Mike, where should they turn in their sheets? Just please turn them in towards Mike, and we'll get those distributed out to the council tomorrow. We finished what we came here for, and we'll be adjourned. Appreciate your time.